We are live.
Okay, well, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified. It's Wednesday, April 14th, and I would say welcome to our guests, but I don't see any guests at all with us. So welcome to the attendees, the panelists. Since there are no attendees that I see, is that correct? I see one now. It's Susie.
Yes, that's correct.
Since there are no outside attendees, I assume there's no public comment and we will recess to closed session. And we will be back here, I think, at five o'clock. Is that what we're scheduled at five? Great. Thank you very much. I'll see you on the other side.
Okay. Okay, so another minute. Almost. So Amy, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Great. Okay, we will resume to open session, reconvene to open session. And I will call the meeting to order. Our first order of business, first of all, welcome to everybody who's attending. We're glad you're here with us tonight at our meeting of the Board of Education. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance and Shane is there. We're happy to have you with us, Shane. Thanks for helping us.
Nice to see you all. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shane. I will say that we, the board, we are, most of us are here at the school district. We are not in the boardroom tonight. The modifications to the boardroom are still in progress and they haven't quite been done. But we're hoping in two weeks we'll be back in our regular boardroom with all kinds of new good communications equipment to make this meeting more available to people who can't be here with us. So I will report out from the closed session, the board took no action during the closed session. And we're down now to approval of the agenda. I believe we have one, we have an amended agenda. Everybody, I think, has seen that on the personnel report.
Yeah, there, there are, there are three things amended this time. The personnel item, the minutes, we just had to make a correction as well as the closed session, anticipated litigation.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Shane for his preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Shane. And we'll go in order here. Lavender?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so that means that the agenda is approved five to zero. We'll have our mission statement from Dolly, please.
Sure. Okay, our mission statement. In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff, utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, Dolly. I'll quickly go through the rules for public comment at our meeting. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise their hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the raise your hand button. And to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is our student board report. Welcome, Shane.
All right, well, we again have a few things going on in our community. All schools in Castro Valley have reopened with the hybrid model. High school leadership is working on planning senior activities for the end of the year as well as developing possible plans for a modified homecoming, which is dependent on the COVID year that we are in. Canyon Middle School is having a fundraiser with Mod Pizza on the 15th. Canyon Web and Creekside Web has held and is planning on holding activities to help integrate the sixth graders into their school community. And the Castro Valley Educational Foundation is hosting a virtual bike ride fundraiser for the CBUSD Wellness Center from April 16th to the 30th.
Great. Thank you, Shane. Item five, we have the reports from our two bargaining units. First, the CSE, CSEA Local 52, Robin, glad you're here. Almost here. Are you there, Robin? Okay, I don't know where the Robins walked away from.
Hello, I'm sorry.
Oh, there, great, Robin, glad you're here.
Clicked the wrong one. Yes, I am here and lovely to be a part of this Wednesday afternoon. CSEA has definitely been busy. We have been working with making sure that all the information that is consistent, that trickle down theory really does trickle down. And there have been numerous clarifications made along the path and the journey. Our chapter held a very successful special meeting to clarify situations and information that was well attended and well regarded for the information that was passed out. It was after our last board meeting with the newest updates involving going into orange. So it was appreciated by those that in attendance. We have set up for our, we're in the process of setting up for our annual conference, which will be via Zoom this year and getting our delegates in place and in order. For that, we pass, confirmed and passed our bylaws update at our last meeting and had its second reading and it was approved. And beyond that, just getting things back on into campus on the hybrid model. So plans for the end of the year are coming up quick and we will be celebrating Classified School Employees Week in May. And looking forward to the end of the year. It's coming up fast.
That's true. Thank you, Robin, for your comments. Move on now to Castro Valley Teachers Association. I actually don't see Mark on there, but there are, Amy, there are two telephone calls. It could be one of those. Is there a representative from CVTA tonight?
See, I don't see anyone either.
Yeah, I don't see him on here, so we'll move on and come back to him if we need to. So move on. I don't have any, I don't see any requests for public comment on items not on the agenda. So move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. It's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Lavender.
I just wanted to say there's three resolutions on the consent agenda that I wanted to make note. One is celebrating the diversity of our community, so I wanted to recognize the resolution declaring May 2021 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And also recognizing the hard work of our staff and celebrating the work that they've done, which is May 12th, the resolution for Day of the Teacher and the resolution for the week of May 16th to 22nd for Classified School Employees Week. So I just wanted to make note of those because part of our, all part of our community and wanted to make sure they're celebrated.
That's great. Parveen?
I was actually going to ask if I could read the resolutions for the Day of the Teacher and the classified. And at our last meeting, we actually had a presentation about Asian Pacific Islander and we had a resolution as well. So I ditto what trustee Whitaker said as well. So if, um, would you like me to read it first before you, you vote?
I think that'd be good.
All right, I'm on H. This is the resolution declaring May 12th, 2021 California Day of the Teacher. And in the cover sheet, I've explained a little bit about, you know, the work that's done, but we're extremely grateful to our teachers and our certified, other certified support staff. You know, when we talk about teachers, we have counselors and social workers and psychologists and and so forth in, who work really hard to plan instruction. And we want to thank them for their commitment to academic and social emotional well-being of our students. So the resolution states declaring May 12th, 2012, 2021 California Day of the Teacher. Whereas providing quality education in our young people continues to be our greatest challenge in education as well as our most vital responsibility. And whereas we rely on teachers, social workers, counselors, nurses, and other certified staff supporting students to ensure proper instruction in all subjects ranging from arithmetic to foreign language and fine arts. And whereas the board and the superintendent recognize the unique and highly specified specialized skills required to meet the needs of every young person. the unique and highly specialized skills required to meet the needs of every young person and prepare them for success in an ever-changing world. And whereas our teachers, social workers, and counselors, and other certified support staff have devised new techniques and instructional practices in order to create safe spaces for students to learn online and have developed new measures to assess their needs. And whereas educators have had to practically reinvent their entire profession during this pandemic. And whereas the members of the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education wish to express their appreciation and respect for the teachers who are a part of the Castro Valley Unified School District instructional program for outstanding and meaningful contributions they're making to our young people. And whereas May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one has been established as the Day of the Teacher by the state of California, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Castro Valley Unified School District does hereby declare its support for the celebration of the Day of the Teacher, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And I know that the vote will come in just a bit. And now I will read the Classified School Employees Week, declaring May sixteenth to twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Again, our classified employees having continued to be absolutely instrumental in our school district's ability to support students during distance learning and reopening schools safely. And the resolution states declaring May sixteenth to twenty-two, to twenty-twenty-one Classified School Employees Week, whereas classified employees contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive learning environment. And whereas classified school employees provide valuable services to the schools and students of the Castro Valley Unified School District. And whereas classified school employees play a vital role in providing for the welfare and safety of the students of the Castro, of the Castro Valley Unified School District. And whereas classified school employees employed by the Castro Valley Unified School District strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community. And whereas classified staff have done an exemplary job adjusting to new ways required to respond to the needs of students, staff, and families during the pandemic. And whereas the classified employees have and continue to be instrumental in our ability to support students during distance learning and reopening schools safely. And whereas classified employees in every department and division have worked hard to make it possible for students to stay connected and engaged during distance learning and be provided nutritious meals throughout the year, including during the summer. Whereas classified employees help keep all staff working on-site safe, continue all necessary operations through the district, and through their valiant efforts, prepare schools for reopening successfully. Whereas May sixteenth to twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one has been established as Classified Employees Week by the state of California, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Castro Valley Unified School District hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contributions of classified school employees to quality education and declares the week of May sixteen to twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one as Classified School Employees Week in the Castro Valley Unified School District.
Thank you very much, Parveen. A lot of reading, but good, good things to read. Dolly, please.
I know I already seconded the motion, but of course, I really love the teachers in Castro Valley. They are excellent at the job that they do, and they deserve all the praise possible, especially here during the pandemic pivoting on a dime and going with, you know, doing distance learning and then pivoting again to hybrid. And also, a big shout-out to many of the classified employees that I have worked with. School secretaries are the most valuable person I've ever found on any campus. They usually know everything that's going on in the entire school. If you want to know something, you ask the secretary. That's who knows. And then I've had really terrific maintenance people who, you know, your door's falling off the hinges or whatever it might be, and they come right away and they fix things. Even if they are the regular maintenance person, that that's not necessarily always their job. They don't want to see your door, you know, the screws coming loose. They'll just get a screwdriver out and fix it. So wonderful classified employees. Of course, to all of the paraeducators and other classified employees as well, really excellent workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly. Anyone else? Great. It's removed and seconded. There's no further discussion, so I'll ask Shane for his preferential vote.
Yes.
And I'll do the roll call now. Lavender? Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so the motion passes five to zero, and the consent agenda is approved. At this point, the board's going to take a five-minute recess, so we will shut down here for a moment. And it's now five seventeen, so five twenty-three. I'll give you an extra minute. Thank you very much.
What I was really pleased to hear was fifty percent of the adults, adult residents have received at least one vaccine. So this is really one of the reasons he was saying for the Alameda County being stable. And just, we should really be pleased with all the work that our health providers have done to support us. Alameda County residents age sixteen and up are now able to receive vaccination. In fact, we'd sent something home already, but we have more information coming from the county for sixteen-years-old, sixteen, seventeen, and up. And then we actually heard that ages twelve and up are likely to be able to receive vaccination, hopefully this summer. Governors expected to roll back the blueprint for a safer economy by June fifteenth and transitioning to a time where we would have guidance and fewer restrictions, but more guidance to operate safely. Now, that is all contingent upon vaccine availability and stable hospitalization numbers, which then translates to we all have to keep doing what we've been doing. We can't let off. Expect new CDC guidelines for cleaning, moving kind of more to routine cleaning guidance. And I am very hopeful that we have learned new skills, new habits, and will continue that. Maximizing outdoor eating opportunities. And we're very fortunate to live in California where we can actually do that so much of the year in the fall, but also being able to eat indoors with some precautions in place. So that's good news. Alameda County Public Health Department revised the health screener, and you most likely, all of you have also seen the screener. It's changed because it was, the questions that were in there were really causing a lot more people having to be quarantined. And kind of, it didn't give the right indications that we needed, so they changed that, and we updated ours based on that. And then there were updates on graduation and gathering guidelines that are, that make us very happy, too. Next slide, please. Now, some, some other updates are for, for us, as Shane said. All TK twelve and transition program is back in person in the hybrid model, and it's been awesome to see kids. Everywhere I go, teachers are happy to see students, students are happy to be there, and classified staff are like, it just feels right. And administrators, it just feels right. Oh, I may, I meant to add percentages, and I did it because I have it with me. And we actually added a slide later on, so I'll go over that. I wanted to talk about vaccination. We haven't, you know, we are not asking, we are asking people to self-report, and we have about eighty percent have self-reported, but we have had a hundred percent available for a hundred percent of our employees. COVID testing is available Monday through Friday from twelve to six at the CFA. I wanted to say a couple of things about testing. That appointments are available until, right now, if somebody went on there, till April thirtieth. Also, if somebody, you know, if someone walks up, they can accept walk-ups if they're unable to register online, but they will tell you what to do. Also, just so you know, we have tested one thousand six hundred fourteen students so far and a hundred eighty-nine adults through that. And we've had six total positive test results for students and two adults. And I'm going to go over this chart that we also have. Also, currently, the only guidelines for student testing is, is to have in the orange tier, because we're in the orange tier, to only test symptomatic and response testing. So all the other folks are just testing, but we are, we have to test symptomatic folks. And then I wanted to just share that on our website, there's a ton of resources for COVID. And Amy, are we able to click on that? Amy's going to click on that, please. Thank you. So this page is full of information, and if you look on the right, Amy's going down to exactly where I wanted to show you. So we have a chart that is on here for anybody to look at. It shows you, this one is the latest update, April sixth. It shows you how many cases we have identified in our school district. Now, this doesn't mean that they've trans, it was transmitted during school or on our site. It just, it's cases that we are hearing about. In fact, I keep getting emails from Mr. McMaster says we have had so this case and that case, and it's always, thank God, so far, it's always like the student hasn't been to campus or we've quarantined or all of that. So I just wanted to make sure that you can always check our website to see how many cases we have. And then sports and athletics competitions update's going to come up in a bit. The capacity to manage is very critical as these guidances change frequently. So I want, I want to ask for every continued patience as we move from different, you know, just guidances change and, and we're looking at doing things differently. Not only do we have to put those things in place, but we always have to think about the management of that. Like, for example, I know that you know, if we have one positive case, it takes all this work to make sure that we follow the process that we have to have. all this work to make sure that we follow the process that we have to have in place to keep everyone safe. And worse, we always follow, wanna follow the rules because it is when people become careless that we end up having cases go up and not being in a good place. So, and then there is an Alameda, on the Alameda County website, there is a chart that shows all of the school districts in Cal, in, in Alameda and who's open and, and what they have in place. Just wanted to let everyone know that they can refer to that. Next slide. So I wanted to share this with you. I want to thank Amy for putting this together. As you know, every, Ms. Chan, it's every Monday, correct? At first it was every other Monday.
It's still every other Monday.
Every other Monday. So every other Monday we're required through a SB AB 86 to actually for Ms. Chan goes on there and everybody, every district has to go to that state website and write down what percentage, how many students are in person fully, in hybrid, in distance learning. So Ms. Kyer actually went there and figured all this out and put all the percentages up. And so it is on our presentation that, that's posted, that will be posted. So if you look at Castro Valley Unified School District, for example, it's, when it says total in person, they mean like in person fully, not hybrid. Right? Last fall. And next fall. But so for us, our students are either in hybrid or distance learning. If you look at that, you will see this is incredible. 77% of our elementary schools are in and 81% of our secondary are in hybrid. And then it shows you the percentage on, in distance learning for both. Now, the percentage, if you add up the numbers for secondary is higher than we have. It's because they also include adult school in distance learning. Cause most of their programs are distance learning. And then we have Berkeley Unified. And they actually marked it total in person. I do work with all of the superintendents in the county. And I can tell you there, there are high schools, they're still working on, their elementary schools are in five days a week. In person for not all day, but they either start at nine something and go to 12 or eight to, eight to 12 or nine to one. But they also have, you know, they have after school programs. They also have had to do a lot of, I'm sure juggling around with staff because they just had to pivot. So a lot of work on, on that end. Alameda, as you see, the secondary at that time when this was reported was not in yet and you see 62%. San Leandro, about 48%, 32% for secondary. So all those numbers are there, Pleasanton about 60% and 40%. And San Ramon has 33% and 22%. And the rest are in distance learning, about 67% in distance learning. Livermore, 64% and 55% for secondary. So I wanted to share this because I think when we talk about full-time in-person, hybrid and distance learning, I want to reiterate that there are nuances in every school district. And when I look at the percentage of students we have coming back to in-person, I wanted to share that with you. It's very high. And when you talk about the, all of the things that we need to put in place to make sure that we provide a safe environment, it takes a lot of work to set that up. So we're just very happy to see what we have at this point. And I just wanted to share that. I know there will be time for you to ask any questions you have and I'll go back if I need to. But thank you, Amy, for that. Next slide please. So I'm gonna ask actually Mr. McMaster to join us. I could pretend and do all of this, but he's the expert in this area. So he'll do that. Thank you, Mr. McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Marty. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be speaking to you all as a member of the district's COVID safety team, which is comprised of our nurses and a director of human resources. We work together as a core to try to interpret the guidelines for a variety of our programs and implement them with fidelity, which is a word I may overuse tonight, but I'll do my best not to. So I wanted to start by giving you some brief background that since last spring, the presiding agencies have been coordinating to try to come up with safe parameters for athletics, interscholastic athletics to reopen. And there's a number of different groups involved, outlined on the slide is just a few of them. And mainly, mainly what I'm focusing on tonight is the high school interscholastic athletics, because that's where the majority of the guidelines and participation has come down. So there are other guidelines out there for, for general youth sports, but our high school sports have some some pretty specific things that we've had to, to come up with a way to plan for and roll out. So and the next slide, Ms. Kyery. This is, I'm just trying to get it to fit on the slide correctly. This is actually the, the top part and the bottom part. The document that shows a, a number of the interwoven safety guidelines. There's, there's not just general timelines for which sports can, can operate. But there's also actually the, the state, the California Department of Public Health and the California Interscholastic Federation have partnered to identify which sports are allowed based on county safety tier. So actually the, the box on the right, the color-coded box on the right speaks to what sports are permitted. Currently, we're in the orange safety tier. So everything in purple, red or orange, under the guidelines per those sports are permitted to be able to begin. You know, additional pieces to consider for everyone is that generally when we run a year of athletics, we run it over three seasons. We run all of these sports broken up into three parts as opposed to two parts. So it's definitely been additional challenges with limited number, sorry, a fixed number of facilities to have all of these different teams operating at the same time, giving a special consideration to all the various safety requirements. I am gonna touch a little bit later on some recent guidance, which has been released and identified that allows actually the, the sports listed in the yellow tier to operate earlier than the county being in the yellow tier. And I'm gonna outline that for everyone towards the end of, of my piece, but Ms. Ms. Kyer, I'm ready for the, the next slide. So just a status update, we have a number of programs competing, some of which are actually wrapping up their, their seasons. They've been in competition for the better part of a month and a half. We have teams participating in general conditioning, which has a different set of, of guidelines and parameters. And then we also have some teams that have not been meeting either as a hub, but either have plans submitted or, or, you know, working on getting plans submitted here very shortly. So you can, you can see that some of the sports in conditioning and those not meeting fall into that yellow category that we just outlined. And Ms. Kyery, I'm ready for the next. So the process, the COVID safety team has followed. And then specifically in this case with Castro Valley High School is, you know, we, we hear about these updates and we jump right on them. We work to interpret them. We work to evaluate what our league, team members are doing. So we have to communicate between different school districts and school sites to assess their ability to offer teams, assess our league schedules. We have to look at those guidelines and we have to come up with a plan to implement those guidelines again with fidelity. And that includes oftentimes a, a multi-departmental approach, not only within our district office, but between a district office departments and our school sites. And when we can get all of that in frame, we memorialized it in written safety plans for which teams have submitted, being prompted piece by piece for these key, the key parameters, key guidelines for us to operate, not only get open, but stay open. I mean, that's really, as Ms. Amati said earlier, there's, there are instances of this terrible virus that will pop up, but our effectiveness is in keeping it from spreading based on our, our planning, our preparation and our safety. So an additional piece I will add besides the safety plans from the school sites are the training, the training of our coaches by our district nurses, which has taken place to ensure that they're, they're aware and they're, they're the point people. So we, we have to ensure everyone is, is keeping these things in frame for us. Ms. Kyery, next slide. So the latest update, which the state recently, or there's a recently some written guidance given for conditions to return to play if not otherwise authorized. So what that means right now is our, our sports approved to operate in the yellow tier, but we're not in the yellow safety tier. So there, there's a, a number of bullet points. There's some intricacies to it, but there's sort of an oversimplified update of what some of these key guidelines are is regular testing, which we have in frame. We're very fortunate. Our business office and, and other departments have worked hard to have students testing in frame, really good testing to PCR testing, which is, which is ideal. Available on a centralized school campus. The safety plans that we've been using require some updates for these indoor sports. So we've had to re devise and have recently, recently rolled those out, made those available to the respective teams. It also actually requires that there are specific COVID safety plans for the individual indoor facilities that we operate in. So, and on top of that, there's naming point people who are responsible for making sure the plans are implemented and updated. So what I can report to the board and our community and everyone in audience is that, you know, we're working, we're working safely, cautiously in that way, but with purpose. And we're confident and we're aligned with our league member schools. And we are actually gonna be, we feel in a position to be able to launch these, these yellow tier sports in the very near future. And that is the extent of what I wanted to review with everyone. Thank you.
I wanted to just add that, one of the other things we had talked about that Mr. McMaster had shared with me is this agreement that you need between, within the league for cases, for positive cases. That's huge. Because we need to have that agreement so that we know if someone is positive, that we can follow through and make sure, because we're playing games, we're, we are in competition. So if you want to add anything about that.
Ms. Marty, I am so sorry I left that out. So I've been so focused on the, the minimum requirements to get practices started for these teams. And I forgot that, that is one additional requirement that's really key for when the interscholastic competition occurs. And so what it, what the guidelines actually require is that we come up with an agreement between schools in the league and it really is a league of how we are going to share information with each other such that if a Castro Valley Unified Student involved in one of these sports tests positive, that we're protective of that student's private health information, but we're sharing enough with our, our opponent's school to help keep them safe and vice versa. And I can tell everyone that this is, this has already come up at least one time with the current sports operating. And we found without an agreement in place, it was a painstaking process to, to go back and forth between other schools and, and other, other school personnel to try to get enough information to assess whether or not our students are safe. So that is a, a very key thing. And I apologize so much for leaving that one out.
No, that's okay. I, before I move on to the state assessments, I do want to thank Mr. McMaster. I have to say the, the number of hours that Mr. McMaster, Mr. Gosiru, our nurses spend together and our nurses actually attend our cabinet meetings with all the directors and all of us every week. Because they're the experts in this area to support us, but I just want to thank them for all of their work. And it's as far as all the athletic programs, it's the Mr. Fortenberry and, you know, the, the high school principal and vice principal, everybody. So I'm gonna, after this state assessment is done, we're gonna have a slide where it says questions and then I'll take any questions. If, if you don't mind. So state assessment is another thing that we're hearing a lot about. And because it's around Sback testing right now. So districts are actually required to administer assessments to report to the state. And a part of that is also a, a federal requirement. So, you know, in order for us to receive federal funds, we also have to have a robust accountability system in the state that's tied to the federal accountability system. If, so for this year, they have actually based on a lot of, you know, requests and, and discussion with, between the state and the federal government. We have, we are now allowed to actually use local assessments. But that is only if we're unable to administer the CASP. And if we have an alternative robust local assessment, we can use those instead, but they have to be the kind of local assessments that can be used consistently across grade levels or schools. And for us, this is an area of growth. So moving forward, it is one of the things we've been working on to develop because of the essential standards that our teachers and administrators and, and classified, they've all worked for the last couple of years on that. So hopefully, you know, as not hopefully by next year, we should have all of them in place. But at this point, we're gonna have to take CASP since we don't have all of those in place everywhere. Because we want to be, we could say we have them. But if it's not consistent, we're not actually following what we're supposed to be following. And the other piece that's difficult is we are having, we also have CAST, which is the California Science Test. But there is no alternative for science, for that science test. And it's, so districts actually can not give CAST if they can actually provide an explanation of why. So we're gonna see what we could do about that. Yesterday I did hear a lot about assessment at meetings as well. Districts, this is one thing they have given us. This year, they've said, we're not gonna penalize you for the percentage of participation. Remember, we have always had to have 95%. So now if we have 90% or, you know, 89%, we are not gonna be penalized. The other one that's really important is they have decoupled from the dashboard. That means that because it's gonna be such a mishmash of things that we're not, they're not gonna be able to use or not going to use the CASP results or the local assessments, because they have to figure all of that out on the dashboard. But like I said, there's also no online version of alternative assessment for special education students. So we'll take care of that as well. So there's just a lot of nuances, just a lot of pushback. Pushed to see if we can actually be completely waived, we can waive that requirement and it didn't actually work. They gave us two things, but not waiving the whole assessment piece for this year. So now next slide please. So I just wanted to share this. Thank you, Ms. Perator and Ms. Rishichi and Ms. Dr. Raymond. So this is the testing. Elementary is doing smarter balance summative assessment for ELA and mathematics, grade three to five. And then fifth grade has the California Science Test. Secondary is smarter balance summative assessment for ELA. For math, for six, eight, we actually have an assessment, an alternative assessment and mathematics diagnosis testing project, which is MDTP for math. And then smarter balance for 11th grade and science test in eighth. Next slide. Okay, questions?
Yeah, I, I have a series of questions for Mr. McMaster in parting, if that's okay. So it sounds like a large percentage of our athletes are being engaged in some way. And unfortunately, based on where we're at, there are some that are not. Is that a fair assessment of that? And I know it's a modified schedule.
Mr. McMaster can.
Trusty Kuzia, could you just elaborate a little bit when you say?
So I know, I know this is not the, the athletic season any of our, our student athletes wanted. And particularly for our seniors, I, I know it must be really tough, right? Based on the sports I saw here and the information you provided, it does look like a lot. Based on the sports I saw here and the information you provided, it does look like a lot of our student athletes, though. Despite the fact that we're in the middle of global pandemic, um have been able to engage in some type of activity.
Yes, it's been a been a very positive thing, yes.
Um so the athletic conditioning, just so I have clarification on that. Um that seems like that's probably something positive for like team cohesion as the team's going into maybe next year. Um it might not be competition, but it lets those athletes continue building their skills.
Yeah, yeah, so so really what it tends to be is uh prior to season organization. And so it's uh it's it's allowable regardless of the tier system I showed you, because it can be conducted outdoors. It's not, there's no use of equipment like there normally would be for um swimming or water polo for polo, for instance, they can, they can. You know, swim laps, um you know, for uh let's say basketball or volleyball, they could run bleachers or something like that. Um so there are, you know, despite not every team being in that far left column that I had showed on the slide, which is actually competing against other schools. Uh mo- I would say that the majority of the sports are engaged in some type of. Um you know, proximity to other students and sort of positive team cohesion, as you said.
And my last, my last question, uh the seasons, they, it looks like they go out through June. Hope some of those who haven't been able to uh. Get back to either conditioning or 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 competitions.
I I think I missed the first part, um but I I think I think it was along the lines of. I I'm confident that all the sports were permitted to be able to operate, we're going to be able to operate to some degree this year. It is, it's definitely dependent on our league member schools, because we we have parameters about who we. Are kind of allowed to compete with, and we did an assessment as early as today with updates from our league member schools. And some don't even currently have plans for when they're going to launch some of those those remaining sports. So we'll hope, we'll hope that we have um that we have competition, but at the very least are, we will have those sports launched. And at this point, I think one competition would be would be worth it for me if I was, if I was um, you know, in my. In my senior year, unfortunately, yes, it has been a very uh, you know, tragic year from that standpoint.
Yeah, it it's clear to me you all have been fighting um to ensure maximum participation. Um but adhering to some very rigorous safety standards, so thank you.
Um I have a couple of things. One of the things that as a public health professional that we worry about now that things are sort of loosening up. And um people are feeling a little more relaxed about the pandemic is the reduction in testing. And so then you you then are screening people who are symptomatic, and that keeps us in this orange tier. So I am so grateful that our district is offering surveillance testing for teachers and families and students. And that we've had over sixteen hundred students and uh tested, I think is great. Um having that easily accessible, and I've seen it on Facebook, how people are grateful to have this uh resource for their students. Because parents, even though they're sending their kids to school, are still worried about um the spread of COVID. So thank you for making that happen. Um and uh I'm wondering. At what point does the Public Health Department get involved with contact tracing? You mentioned, Nick, a case, a situation where it was um in competition and it was another school. Um so that the burden isn't, it shouldn't always be on the school district. Um yeah, and it can't be, so when does the Public Health Department step in with contact tracing?
Well, so to date, we we are required to report uh any positive test for, you know, one of our students or staff. Um if they're involved in any on-campus activity or or one of our in-person programs. So in the in the case of the instance I mentioned, um we weren't contacted by the Public Health Department. But I know in our own contact, they're working hard to ass- they're really, I I get the sense they're working hard to assess that. We have implemented our safety plans correctly and with fidelity, and if they have confidence in the information they're providing them. Then there's trust there, and I think um I I would say I'm happy to report that in the instances of the positive tests. Uh such as what Ms. Amati referred to earlier, um the they were students that were off-campus. And a lot of cases recently, actually, they accessed this wonderful testing over break and never stepped foot on practice uh on the campuses. So that was really fantastic. Um but in in, you know, maybe just a few scenarios, the Public Health Department has been very satisfied with our. Case investigation and our own contact tracing, so um they've never had to step in and intervene. Unfortunately, we've never had anything so complicated, I think that they've had to, you know, call call the forces in to support us. I think, I think um I think a lot of our our folks are are doing a really, really good job and taking this uh taking it to the level. Of seriousness that it needs to keep everyone safe.
Yeah, and I I really do appreciate that. You said something in your presentation about, you know, cases of um infection will pop up. But your job is to make sure that all the safety precautions are in place to prevent the spread. And I really appreciate the detail that you're putting into all of that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I um I ditto that. I I think um I have to say, I don't think I've ever had. Most of us haven't had an experience unless we work with the Health Department or Department of Health, like you do. I, we haven't had the opportunity to actually work directly with them, and I have been nothing but impressed with all the support we're getting from. All of them. So I know that if we call them for anything or want to have a have a question, we've got a direct line. So we're very appreciative um in that way. And I I also want to say, even last week, when everybody was, you know, we were trying to get people to take their vacation. I know that our folks were working around the clock on cases and reporting. In fact, on Sunday, we had a meeting to talk about Monday. So I know that uh Nick and Dustin and our nurses were working on it on Sunday. Um so, thank you. Any other questions so far and anything?
Yeah, I maybe this is something that you intend to get to later on, and if it is, I'll be quiet, but I was wondering if you had any. Uh anything to say about our planning for the fall?
Yes, that that's the next piece. I will absolutely go over that. Good question. Any other questions? And what we've covered. Okay, next slide. Thank you, Mr. McMaster. So um I call this legislative activities related to twenty one, twenty two school year. Because that's really what determines what's going to happen, right? And the health conditions in CDC and Department of Health. So April twelfth and thirteenth, yesterday and the day before, were AXA's Legislative Action Day. That means that over six hundred of us participated in activities. So there were interviews that we would be listening to, we participated in um online, but the as a group. But there were also appointments that were made for us or we had made to meet with individual legislators. And um have conversations. Um I was fortunate and very busy that those two days. And met with a lot of people with a couple of other partners I had on my team. So um I actually got to meet with the Senate staff and the Partner of Finance. Um a- and those are really um unique opportunities, because usually you don't get to meet with the people or. So involved in and in in that kind of work. And they're always very gracious about sharing, so our questions are, so what are you thinking? What are you hearing? What are you working on? Um and then they always ask us, what is it that we need? So that was great. We, I also participated in live program interviews with many legislators discussing reopening schools. So here's what I heard over and over and over again. Schools are expected to be open fully starting twenty twenty one, twenty two school year. Over and over again. In fact, one legislator said, just stop asking. So again. That, they all said that. But we have, the only thing that would change that is if we don't follow all the things we're supposed to follow. And we have a a global issue and a pandemic that doesn't allow us to do that. At this point, things look good, so that is the plan, that's what I heard. Um in fact, I I, you know, just just a lot of details around that. Um likely a full year um online option also would be available for those who are unable to attend. Um so, but the default is in-person, full-time, full-year, every day. But they do recognize that there are families who may not be able to come. Uh but they're expecting that to be a very small percentage, and that decision hasn't been made which kind it would be. Because if it is online through independent study, there is actually a cap. Or they could change that through legislation and say for next year, it could be more. Um but what they're looking at is not the kind of thing we had. The the one other thing I kept hearing from all the legislators is there is no hybrid. There that our funding will be based on full-time in-person. Or if we have a certain percentage that they allow us to have online. And not moving in between the programs, which will require us not to do what we did this year. We tried to accommodate everybody back and forth as much as we could. Is that at the beginning of the year, we assume everyone's coming back, obviously, before the beginning of there, as we're planning. And then once we know more details to ask people that they need to tell us now for next year. If if they really just want to stay online, because that's something maybe that was successful for their children. Or that they just cannot come back um and not go back and forth. So and most likely, it'll either be independent study or a school like our virtual academy. So that doesn't mean that um that you would still be at your own school and still in online. It would actually be the virtual academy. So all of those details will be worked out based on legislation. Um what they allow us to do. Legislators heard from, like I said, over sixty, six hundred of us. The need for clear directions in May, so that was our first point. Everybody we met with, we said, we cannot have this change guidelines every other day, and we cannot wait till. July for you to tell us, because lots of school districts are actually starting in July. So they heard us loud and clear and did say that the legislation is going to be coupled with the um May revise. Pretty soon after that, if not around that same time. So we're hoping to get that clarity in through in May. Which then gives us time to finish our planning. Um they uh we also shared the importance of structuring the budget with the need for ongoing funding. So I spent quite a bit of time around funding with the Department of Finance, with the different um legislators I we met. Um and really talk about, we appreciate the one-time funding for the learning. Uh extended learning for all of the things PPE and all of those things we've had, and and we couldn't have done it without it. Uh but we really have to look at the structure of our funding and ongoing funding moving forward. Um and again, you know, they also agree with that, but we'll see what happens. And May revision will provide clarity, like I said, around needed uh needed for um needs for funding and reopening. Directly tied together, because if they tell us, for example, you can only have so many in this kind of program in online. Then that kind of did tells us what kind of funding we're going to get per student. Um so legislation likely also to move forward related to retention, grading and graduation. This one I worked on a little bit with the legislators last week, actually, because um as a. Assembly member Gonzales actually put this forward, because there are so many families all throughout California. That have been worried about their students' grades during distance learning, not being engaged. And I'm talking about retention. So I know myself and a lot of other people who are working on it did share also yesterday and the day before. Retention should be the last resort, and retention should not be something we look at for high school and at middle school. It is devastating for children as they get older to be retained unless it is really what's needed. And if someone is retained, doing the same thing over again isn't what they should be getting, that there should be. So that was really my push was, if you're going to pass this, it needs to have some accountability measures. Um also, the grading piece actually wasn't so bad. They may act, and this bill um has legs, and it's moving pretty fast. Through legislation. Uh that grading, so for example, after students get grade, as everybody knows, nobody can change grades except for the teachers. The teacher of record is the only person who has access to grades and can grade students and change. If this bill passes, if a parent looks at the child's grade and it's better for them to have a pass, not pass. They can ask for a pass, not pass, and the legislation would then allow us to just do that for them. Versus having to go through, because it may be after school is over. Um the other piece is graduation. They are concerned about graduation requirements for not just this year. But for the next two years, because of what's happened this this year and last year. So there may be some changes around graduation requirements. Um and you know, even if a district has graduation requirements that are this, you know. But like fifteen things over here that if it's required, if only ten is required, that they would still graduate. So those things will uh be clarified through that. I have a feeling this bill is going to get through. Um I'm just um hoping, and one of the other things that we pushed back on the the timelines and the deadlines they had did not work at all. To have a timeline of June or July fifteenth doesn't work. We need to have it done in May. Um or the latest in like early June. So just wanted to share that with you. Next slide. And then uh Dr. Bardock also spoke to us, um talked about guidance and principles. Um most likely not as directive. So we asked, as restrictive as it's been right now, you know, six feet, three feet. Um and she really talked about the the goal is to have basic layers of protection. With like masking, vaccination, cleaning, things like that. Uh not necessarily um a distance that has to be four feet or six feet or three feet. Because um the the things have shifted, there is a lot more vaccinated uh folks. And uh with, but I kept hearing from her and everybody else, I've heard masking will be with us for a while. Probably through um next year, at least the big, um you know, biggest part of it. Likely not including strict distancing, like I said, or spacing guideline, tracking all variances, as you know. There is concern about variances, um but they get the weekly updates that they receive. And what they're seeing so far in California um is that it's uh it's staying very um kind of low. The 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 UK variance, because we have our own variance. Maybe that's why they're competing. Um and then vaccination will really is what prevents uh mutation. Um and then encouraging vaccination. She asked for us to do our part to make things available, to encourage vaccination. Um obviously, we can't require, but all of the things that everyone is doing to get messages out, to make it easier for folks to get vaccination. Is really important. Next slide. And then our plan, again, based on what you heard, full in-person instruction, five days a week, as expected by the state, following guidelines and requirements. And again, assuming we're going to be where we are um or where we need to be. Um and we've already begun planning. Um and we need to hire additional staff as we're looking at things possibly. Um and then planning for learning acceleration, that extended learning plan um is going to come um to the board in May. Because it should be approved by June as a requirement for the funding that they've given. I believe that's it, except I wanted to tell you about this. Had doesn't have to do with reopening, but I really want to take this opportunity to thank Natalie Young and Marion Meadows and Adult School. For putting this together. Angst, Z Care Foundation and Castro Unified are working together with Adult School, and this film will be available. There's a lot of information on our website, on social media for you. Um and then following the film, uh there is actually conversation for prime, prime, primary school, elementary. Middle school and high school. So just happy to share that with you. Any questions? Comments, discussion? I'm done with my presentation.
Um I have a few things. Thank you for a really comprehensive update. Um uh that that's really invaluable. And um as you were speaking, I I'm just reminded how um. Your presence in the on a statewide basis, that leadership really helps us in moments like this. Um and it's great to hear um how you're engaging. Uh legislators. So that that's really fantastic. Um one you you talked about um uh the conversation about ongoing funding. Do you think um folks in Sacramento get this idea that? They'll will need resources for extended learning well beyond next year. Uh you you seem to hint like the around graduation requirements, they they kind of see maybe uh we may need to loosen things up there. Um but yeah, I just want to make sure that they don't see it as, oh, we'll make an investment next year, but. We're not going to invest um for a few years as as we deal with that impact.
No, I did hear um what you just mentioned. I think they're recognizing that this is not a one-year deal. I think that's why. You know, it's talking about the next two, three years. Um so yes, they're hearing that. They're seeing that.
And I I really um being on the other side, uh I I won't speak for Dolly, but once you're on this side, uh uh being. A school board member, you definitely hear just the spectrum of opinions about school reopening. Um I'm wondering. How we make that balance for next year and what the what your conversations are like in Sacramento. Of acknowledging without widespread vaccination for children. Um honoring that, you know, there will be families that don't feel safe and making sure that that we respect that. It's really encouraging to see. We we can anticipate twelve-year-olds and above hopefully by the summer. But um I'm I'm just wondering how how that conversation is going about. I mean, not, I I don't think a district should be penalized to make efforts that we provide an ongoing virtual option if families do not feel safe. So I'm I'm just wondering if they're receptive to that.
Yeah, I actually uh no, I um I have to say I agree um and they agree. I think. They all said, we know that we've learned new things that we didn't know before, right? There are students who have experienced online and have been very successful. So they're not talking about not having online. They're just saying no hybrid. So if you're going to have online and we actually talked about the fact that if it's an independent study and ten percent. That kind of limits us. So I don't think they're going to go with ten percent. I think they're just going to. Make it more clear about what it means to have online. They're also recognizing that there are some online schools that are ineffective, not necessarily in public schools. But um that really don't meet the needs of students. So yes, I think they're in their their hearts in the right place and their minds in the right place.
Thank you. Thank you for that uh presentation, Parveen. That was a lot of information. Um I'm excited and worried at the same time about, you know, just coming back in the fall. Um I feel like we've experienced this collective trauma where. A year ago, we were told to stay in our homes or you're going to encounter someone and die or get really sick. Or cause someone else to get really sick. So I feel like there, I I don't feel like, I hope that there is going to be some. Uh bolstering of our um mental health support for students and teachers. It's a lot. This year has been a lot and I feel like um. Professional development around um trauma-informed practices. Especially because I we don't know how these things will manifest in in our students and in our teachers and families. Um so I hope that's something that um we can get some funding for. Because we all need it. I mean, I feel it myself when I go out, I'm, you know. And it's going to take some time for all of us to get to the point where we feel comfortable sitting two feet away from someone. Yet we're asking our students to to do that and our families to trust us. And I do have a lot of faith in the safety. Um precautions that we have already put into place and will do going forward to meet the needs of of this legislation. Um but that's just something I'm thinking about and also the fact that, you know, Johnson and Johnson vaccine is now is has been pulled. We have uh fewer options right now. Things may change. Um but I also read an article recently that it'll take four to five years to reach. Actual herd immunity. So yes, the masks, I think, will be around for longer than a year. Yeah, that that's all. I don't really have any questions. I just felt the need to express that. That feeling of tra- being traumatized and we've all been traumatized and to be gentle with ourselves and our students and teachers.
Yeah, I just want to respond to um trustee Theodore. I we completely agree. And I think um you will see when Dr. Ryman has been just kind of sharing and getting feedback from people about the extended. Um learning plan. A big piece has been social emotional learning. So you should see some of those pieces when we bring the plan to you. Um but absolutely, already we're we're seeing the need. Um and it's just going to be exponential next year as we move into, you know, full in person.
Um Parveen, you um mentioned graduation and being excited about the opportunities, but you didn't really go into too much detail. So I was wondering if you could clarify a little bit more of what we're looking forward to?
Um yes, um I probably should have included that as well. I was actually talking to. Uh Mr. Torpe today. So the graduation, um the guidelines that they have is if if. Since we're allowed to have like thirty-three percent. Um there, you know, there is a possibility to actually have graduation, but there has to be. All of these things in place. For example, I was, we were reading through it. Like exactly where you sit, who is in your family and how much distance between groups. Um so it looks great. Um so they're still working on it, trying to finish that, but it looks like it's a lot, it's going to be a lot um. More open than we thought. So hopefully we'll be at the stadium with some, you know, it they like if you read through the guidance. It does say like only family, only so many. Um and every person counts, like we can't say. Thirty-three percent doesn't include all of us who are going to be there or all the people who are managing it. So all of that and a lot of health requirements in place, screening. Um just just a ton of things. Um but the other piece is that it has to be outside, that indoor gatherings are very limited. And um and not encouraged at all, not written, not allowed in a lot of. Um, you know, just depending on how many, normally have so few people. Um so there's guidance around gatherings like that outside and inside. Um but it looks positive. Um but again, everybody has to follow those rules because if we um. And I know this is the hard part. When we were talking about managing and having the capacity to manage, because I can tell you. We would go over rules fifteen times and we may still have someone who. Really, you know, pushes back or doesn't understand why we're doing something. Um and it's it's hard to, you know, in these cases, it gets emotional. So we just need to put as much information out ahead of time and make everything uh clear.
Dolly.
Um I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but for the participants. I would just like to encourage everybody to please get vaccinated as soon as you can. That's it.
You know, uh we have a couple of people who have been waiting patiently to speak here and so. I'd like to bring them in now. Uh Amy, if you could bring in the first person.
Yes, of course. Uh David.
David, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. So my my two children just started uh back at the end of March and they were so excited at the end of their first day. They're so happy to see some of their friends and their teachers again. So thank you to the superintendent, the teachers, the staff and the board for getting our kids back in school. I know this took a tremendous amount of work and trust, so thank you for making this happen. As the school year winds down and we look to next year, I'm heartened to hear that we're planning for a full in-person school as uh as an option for all families who choose it. I understand that some families will prefer to stay distanced and I hope that our district will continue to accommodate them. But there's no good substitute for interacting with other people. Our kids need to see and interact with their peers and teachers. Virtual learning makes communication mostly one way and allows for very little interaction between student between students. Kids help each other learn in the classroom. They practice collaboration. They develop leadership skills. And these interactions don't just happen in class. They happen at recess and lunch and PE too. So we we send our kids to public school, not just for an education, but to be part of a community. And to have the opportunity to interact with a diverse group of kids. So over the last year, we we've lost that. We've tried to preserve as much of the academics as we could. Uh but we've lost the collaboration. We've kept them exercising in PE, but we've lost the teamwork. Kids get more from recess than just a break from academics. We shut down a year ago because we didn't know what we were facing, but we know a lot more now. We know masking is effective. We know uh we have readily available testing capacity and we have practice. We've got timed pods and. Uh two months of of real school. We we have effective vaccines now that teachers and staff and and high-risk adults in the community have had the opportunity to get. And uh now everybody is having an opportunity and should have the opportunity to be vaccinated by the end of the summer. So I I I'm so happy to hear that we're we're looking to open fully in the fall. I I also hear people uh, you know. Questioning whether or not that's the right thing to do. So I I really hope that uh that the the board and the. Uh the legislature will will really push and and make sure that this happens. It's it's not going to be easy. There will be challenges to figure out, but I. I'm uh I hope we we are strong in in heading towards that. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Our second speaker is Rosebel. Welcome to our meeting, Rosebel.
Um hi, good evening. Um. After over a year, I just wanted to thank you all. My daughter said, after her first day of school, she looked at me and she said. Mama, today was the best day ever. And she's a fourth grader. Um I'm glad that our schools are finally open. I'm really, really glad to hear Superintendent Amadi state that schools are expected to open fully in the fall. Um but I have concerns and I hope I'm just being paranoid. I have heard chatter in our community lobbying for hybrid in the fall. Some push for all children to be vaccinated. And if this discussion is happening behind the scenes, I request the trustees to bring this to the public forum. Again, I hope I'm paranoid um because the CDC has stated that schools should be the last to close and the first to open. No public health policy at the county, state or federal level is promoting that all children be vaccinated before opening fully. Masking, absolutely. I love that. And I'm a vaccine believer. I got my first dose yesterday. However, we all know that vaccines won't be approved for many children this fall. And if our MOU demands vaccinations for children, then to paraphrase Governor Newsom, let's just pack our bags and go home. So I want to make sure that we can stay consistent and committed when we say we will open our schools to the max allowed by public health. But I also don't want to whitewash our history because during COVID, we have not been opened max to allowed as by public health. We were not open in October. And now we can fully open with three feet, but our MOU is for five to six feet. And I know the MOU took months to negotiate and it's unpleasant to pivot. It's difficult, but it's possible and it is done. Berkeley Unified did it. San Ramon Valley actually had a special board meeting on March twenty-sixth. And their hybrid students are now going back full-time in person. Extensive research shows the undeniable link between education and health outcomes. Inequities in education mirror inequities in health with glaring disparities across race. Last October, I reminded the trustees that seventy-five percent of our students identifies people of color. To open schools, given we have a virtual option, is the anti-racist policy. Abraham X. Kendi wrote, a racist policy is any measure that produces or sustains racial inequity between racial groups. There is no such thing as a non-racist or race-neutral policy. Every policy in every institution, in every community, in every nation is producing or sustaining either racial inequity or equity between racial groups. End quote. I asked the trustees to push for a policy that achieves what is fully allowed by public health in August. Um we are happy for what we have now, but let's make sure we actually achieve what public health will allow in August. Let's actually act anti-racist. And please, everybody, do wear your masks. Cases are going up. Um so take care of yourself and the others around you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosebel. We have no other uh people, hands raised. Um are there any other comments or questions from the board? Parveen, did you want to say something? You're muted right now, Parveen.
This is why we need to be in person. So I uh I I just want to reiterate that. Not only um we have not had any conversation about the fall being hybrid. At the board level or staff level and legislators are not talking about hybrid. They made it really clear. That's why there is this conversation about in-person fully or online. Making those options for families who can't be in person. So if if you're hearing that. Um it's not from us um or anything that we've been talking about. The other thing I wanted to say is with the. With the fact that the legislators are actually going to. Um not have all, there won't be all the restrictions that we've had. So there's really no need to have those things in any kind of agreement. Basically, we're back to normal. So if any agreement needs to be done, it would be very general. And following the health guidelines from the Department of Health. Nothing other than that. I mean, it's just, it it should be pretty simple depending on the legislation. So I'm just hoping, let's just push the legislators to make their decisions faster. So I say that because. You all have an opportunity to reach out to local legislators and let them know what your thoughts are. To let them know that this is, you know, talk to them about ongoing funding, talk to them about the fact that we need. Guidance and we need clear guidance and we need it now versus later. So please feel free to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Parveen and Nick, thank you very much for a terrific presentation. I think you laid out a lot of. Great information for all of us. So thanks very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
To the uh personnel report, approve the personnel report. It has been amended.
I'm a liberal of the personnel report as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will uh call on the roll call for the vote. Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so it's approved by five to zero. Move on to item C, which is approve or. Consider the California Basics Education Skills Test waivers for substitute teachers. Is that, I see.
Doctor B?
Yeah, so this is a one-year option. Uh because of the pandemic. Uh they have waived the CBEST test for one year, which was a requirement for substitutes. For people getting their credentials. So um we want to take advantage of this opportunity, have the waiver. So that we can recruit substitutes for this year. Um it's it's a one-year option. It's we don't know yet if the CTC will extend this for next year as well. But for now, we uh would like to be able to recruit more subs if possible, if it is just the CBEST holding them. I'll ask that you approve this.
Um I move that we, oh, are there other questions?
No, you're in turn.
Improve the uh California Basic Educational Skills Test waiver for substitute teachers.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's your movement second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh we'll start the voting with Shane, your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh Lavender?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so we've approved it five to zero. Thank you. Move on to item D, the Budget Development Process.
Yes, Ms. Chan is going to lead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um so you have a seventy-four pages uh document there, which is the uh Budget Development Process. Um uh we prepared the uh. This is really, this is for twenty-one, twenty-two. Can't believe that we're already talking about twenty-one, twenty-two. Um so um uh zero-based budgeting, and you probably have heard, probably have heard. Uh the term um often used. Um and we've uh been in this uh zero-based budgeting for the the last four years now, four to five years. Um for the public, it is a ma- a management tool that we use to achieve uh more cost-effective ways. Uh for delivery of of services. for delivery of services. It requires programs and and services to be justified. Also allows us or an opportunity to direct redirect efforts and funds having low impact on student achievement to new programs that meet the goals of the district. So so I wanted to just share the, what that, you know, what the really, what CBB is all about. In terms of the budget development process, as you know, this is not just, you know, we just didn't start the budget development process this month. We actually, it's really a full year. In my previous presentations, I've shared like a calendar of what really happens every month to to really prepare, even though we're in the current year and we're working on, you know, all of our expenditures and preparing our interim reports. We're also behind the scenes are starting to prepare for next year, right? So and so that this is now the the part where in the in the terms of the process is we bring to you the plans for next year. And so these, the documents that you see per by site and also departments, these are, you know, a lot of work have have been put into into preparing these documents. It's a meeting with with the business services staff, meeting with principals, with department heads. And also, you know, the kind of the once we have these documents, then it goes to to executive cabinet to review and a lot of back and forth. And so so in the in the packet, one of the things that I included that you're probably not seen in the last few years is actually the the revenue. I know that we've we've when given you the expenditures and the plans, but really, you know, you don't see the revenue until we present the the budget to you in June. This time, I wanted to to for you to see the revenue, where it's coming from. Just so you know, we you have the expenditures, but you also know how much revenue is actually what we're anticipating to get next year. So on page two of the document is really the the revenue in the general fund. As you're aware, general fund consists of two sources, which is the unrestricted and restricted funds. Unrestricted, that's where our local control funding formula, that's where it's 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 recorded. And restricted funds is where you see the federal funds, the state funds, they're very specific uses, right? So it's for a very specific purpose. The the other funds or other restricted sources that we have, they're not in the general fund and that's because, and and I I will name a couple of them. It's, you know, child nutrition, adult ed. Those are not included in the general fund because those, we are required to report those in a separate funds. And so for 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 tonight's meeting or presentation, this is really just looking at the general fund, which is our unrestricted and restricted funds. So with the funding that's listed here for you for, you know, from from local control funding formula on on page one of seventy-four to federal funds, state funds, and local funds, one of the things that I do want to highlight that I I failed to put in a comment right next to it is is the expanded learning. It's the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, which is seven point, close to seven point eight million dollars. You're seeing that for the first time because this is a one-time money that we're getting from the state. So and the reason why I included it here is because in the documents, you're seeing expanded learning expenditures or planned expenditures. And that's why I wanted to to share, to to show that there is this Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant that's included here. But note that that it's it's one time, the rest of the revenue that are listed on the on this page are all ongoing. Okay? On page two of the document, this is the summary, summary of the expenditures. So what we've done is we've looked at all the, all of these spreadsheets here for sites and departments, and we've we've done a calculation of how much for each site. And you can see it's listed and also departments. And you can see like from a CVE, which is the first school that's listed there, how much it costs to run a school. Okay, so on the unrestricted, you know, salaries and benefits, you're seeing a comparison of this year and next year. And how much are we with next year, you know, based on our staffing, based on our enrollment, projected enrollment, we we have a pretty good idea how many staff we need for next year. And then, of course, in in the CBB where it's all we we have it all identified, their requests, right? So for whether it's with they receive Title I funds, supplemental funds and other grants, they're all listed by site. And so for for CVE, you're looking, if you look at all the way across to the to the right, in the current year is two point eight million dollars is the total budget for for them. This includes all of the positions that are are under CVE. And then for twenty-one, twenty-two, which is next year, this is the proposed budget, is two point nine million dollars. So as so this is really, you know, just to give you an idea of what, you know, what the what does it look like and and is it changing that much? How how much impact is that, you know, the 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 additional, if any, right? Ask or or a request is is impacting the total overall budget. So and then if I I know that there was a a note here on the Virtual Academy. So in the current year, twenty twenty, in the current year, twenty twenty, twenty-one, there is a a one point five million dollars budgeted there, but you can see in the twenty-one, twenty-two is zero. And that's because we have a a virtual academy where we have our current teachers that they were reallocated to to back to the sites for for next year. And then we'll wait until we we have an approval or 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 a a recommendation, not sorry, not a recommendation, but what what the state allows us to do for next year. If we need to make an adjustment, then that part of money we need to just take from from the school side. So there's no additional cost in the in the Virtual Academy for for next year. And then one, another note on these on this page is the Stirs on Behalf. So this is Stirs on Behalf. It's really a, this is the unfunded liability that the state is is putting in money for the unfunded liability. This is the portion that they are that we're required to report to show what the state is is putting in for Castro Valley. In the current year is close to five million dollars. And next year, we anticipate that to increase to six point five, six point five million dollars. This is a paper only. We don't actually get the cash. What they are requiring us to do is put in the revenue, record the revenue and also record the expense. So it's a wash for us, but I do want to show it because it's part of the budget, right? So it's included in the total, even though we don't really get the cash for it. Okay, and then I'm going to move us to the next page, if you know, if there are no questions. I'm not going to go over every single page, but I will highlight just a few things here. So CVE, so for elementary schools, they do a really great job, you know, working together. They they talk and and they meet quite often, whether it's the budget or any, you know, the things that that they need to do. But I know for this, every year, they do get together and and just really talk through, you know, their needs and 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 they 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 meet with with our Director of Educational Services, Nia, who gives them a lot of guidance, which is we really appreciate. So on for for CVE, the, what you're seeing here is really their supplemental funds. So on the first page, there are page three of seventy-four for CVE is how much are they going, how much are they getting from supplemental funds? So supplemental funds and what are they using it for? So we have the positions there. One thing that I do want to note on on in row two is you're seeing an increase there for the paraprofessional. And that's because one of the things that we are, we experienced this year is the Title I reduction. Our Title I was reduced by fifty percent. This is a a significant drop for us because the US Census Bureau estimated poverty counts and and the rates dropped below five percent for us. And so with that five percent, unfortunately, it equates to about fifty percent of our funding. So the Census Bureau estimates are not based on anything that we report. It's not what based on, it's not based on what the state reported. It's actually, it's a poverty estimate based on economic and demographic indicators without any school level information. And so I wanted to share that with you. It's it is a fifty percent reduction. And that's the reason why for our Title I schools, we have CVE, we have Marshall, and we have Stanton. We they have positions that are funded out of Title I that we needed to then move into a supplemental fund to continue to provide, so we can continue to have those positions and provide those services to our students. And I think there was a.
I think Mike has a question.
Okay, so I'm just saying this for myself, so I so so I just have a clear sense of this. So the US Census is saying that our our schools are less socio-economically disadvantaged based on data that they have. Not based on any indicators that we have going on in our our schools. Okay. Is that something? Is that just sort of a change in philosophy there? Or is it just based on our specific demographics? Does that make sense?
Parveen, did you want? Yeah. Oh.
I was going to say, this is, this is why the census is so important. They're not looking just at students in our in our school district. They're looking at the whole community and the area. So you have to think about who, you know, the the fact that the prices of homes have skyrocketed in Castro Valley, right? That's great for people who are homeowners, but it also does this kind of stuff. So, yeah.
Yeah. So so yes, that that's correct because of the the economic and demographic indicators. If you recall, when we did a bond, when we had a bond presentation, our, you know, home prices have gone up every single year. And that's part of that, you know, the calculation is they're looking at that economic and demographic indicators. And again, no school level information. So when you look at our our eligibility, our students that are eligible for free and reduced meals, they don't, we don't even submit any of those, that information. They, it's based on the census.
Mike?
I mean, I I'm sure you've read this or seen this, but I know the Biden administration is proposing increasing Title I funding, so maybe that would help us here in this scenario. But thanks for explaining that. That's that. That's really important that people understand that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, just kind of going back to that row two for for CVE, you're seeing that for the three Title I schools is just really, we're just moving those expenditures or the positions out of the Title I. We're still maximizing the Title I funding, but anything that it's not able to pay just because of the reduction, then we move it to a supplemental funds. And then, so on page four of seventy-four, they have, well, actually, at the bottom of page three is funding that they get, which is really a discretionary funds. This is you know, funds that we give to the sites and it's per enrollment. We when we give them about forty-seven dollars per student. So it it pays for library supplies, office supplies, instruction materials, copy copies and postage and all of that. And then on page four of seventy-four, we do give them money, a certain dollar amount to which what we call smooth, open, and close is allows them to to hire or give additional hours for to staff to just really prepare the schools and also to open and also close at the end of the year. And then we, well, I mentioned the Title I, which is on and row from row sixteen all the way to to row twenty-five, this is or twenty-four, this is the the Title I allocation that we're giving to to CVE. And it pays for, you know, RTI specialists. It pays for a, you know, the paraprofessional, a portion of that was moved to supplemental funds and also instructional materials that they need at the site. And then one of the things that I mentioned earlier was the Expanded Learning is every single site in each page, you're actually going to see that Expanded Learning. And this is, you know, the it, one of the, a couple of the things that we can be used for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant is to to provide intervention. So this is after-school intervention intervention. And we are giving about fifty dollars per student for at each site. And this is just the base. We are going to, as Ms. Amadi mentioned in their presentation earlier, is that there is a plan that we're going to take to the board for approve, for your approval by June first. So we are going to take it on May twenty-sixth. And this is just one of the, a few of the things that are already on our list as far as our plans to spend the dollars. Again, these are one time and we are receiving these dollars from the state and they are, and we do need to spend them. There there's a timeline for spending. And it's August twenty twenty-two. So for for elementary schools, they're pretty much the the same, again, except for the Title I schools, they could do get their supplemental funds. And it would be listed what they are using the funds for. They get the smooth, open, and close. And then their discretionary funds. So I do want to skip all the way, if I can, if you, unless you have any questions on the elementary. I'll skip to our secondary and I will start on page twenty-one of seventy-four. So for Canyon, for Canyon Middle School, the first thing that you, the first line that you see there is athletics. I know you you're aware that we we had a, you know, we talked about the athletics earlier in the presentation. We do provide them a a dollar amount for athletics to pay for stipends, right? So for our coaches. There is a request here, as you probably have noticed, that for athletics in the in the current, in the current year, it was seventeen thousand dollars and there was a request to increase them back to, you know, the 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 level that they, prior to the reduction, as if you recall, part of our one point two million dollar reduction is a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the athletics. And so for this request, this unfortunately, we are going to, what we've decided is to keep them at the same level for us twenty twenty-one. So they are in that call section or column of twenty-one, twenty-two. What's approved is the seventeen thousand dollars because it was in fact a part of the reduction that was approved in the current year. And that was the intent of that, of those reductions were ongoing. And it was not just a one-time reduction, they were ongoing reductions. Okay, and then, so you have the noon supervisors. And so this, so they have a paraprofessional that they're giving additional hours to do noon supervision as well as campus monitor. And then you have the supplemental funds. I'm going to skip all the way to, oh, one thing what I do want to note that you probably have seen throughout the 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 pages are, if they are at the red, the red font, that means they're new or increased. Okay, so so forgot to mention that. So so just note that that we really wanted to make sure that we highlight for you any changes, if there's an increase or if there's something new, we we highlight, we we use the red font. Okay? And so for this, for Canyon, they requested a new a six thousand dollar SEL slash anti-racism advisory program. And that was some, and and we put it in that six thousand dollars.
And and you notice that the additions are tied to a grant, ELO grant. So as you look, so when you see, whatever you see in the column of description, if you look all the way to the left, then you'll see where it's coming.
Yes. Yes. So that's, I think. Yes, yes, so that's, thank you, Ms. Amadi. Yeah, so any, any increase, what, what we wanted to do is the, the budget that they received that year is actually the budget that they're, they're going to receive next year. If we can reduce, we, we, we reduce budget wherever we can. For the new things or, or increase or, or new, we are moving those to the expanded learning because we have an opportunity to, to use those dollars for, to, you know, out of the expanded learning to continue the learning, you know, to, to help our, to continue to provide additional services to our students to address learning loss. So, so that is really, those are things that, you know, are, are, we're allowed to use the expanded learning. But as, you know, as I mentioned, is one time, but we will take advantage of those one-time dollars so we can continue to, to provide services to our students.
And, and these are placeholders for expanded learning until we have. So when we come to you to have the whole approval, these are just some of the funds. It's not all of it.
Right.
There are things that we really should have as a part of our program to help kids.
So for, I'm looking at the lottery. So on page 23 of 74, we're still looking at Canyon here, row 33. If you notice that the, their discretionary, it's a little bit higher than elementary just because of their needs. So instead of $47 for, for middle school is $61 per, per student. Okay, and then they still get the smooth, open, and close. And then, of course, then that the, the last few rows there is the expanded learning where they request the intervention, intervention teacher for point five and the intervention specialist, point two FTE. And then the office assistant to us, to help with onsite COVID response protocols. Those are all coming out of the one-time expanded learning. Okay, and then Creekside, again, similar to, to, to Canyon, we are giving them $61 for discretionary funds to pay for library supplies, office supplies. And there was a request on page 26, you probably have seen, that is not going to be, we're not moving forward with that. And then, which is on, it's row 29. But you will see the, the request to use expanded learning for a point two MTSS coordinator as well as the increase of the office assistant hours. Okay. And then Redwood on page 29 of 74, not a lot of changes here. There was a request for counselors, as you know, it's, we, we do have a, in our contract, per student, the ratio for counselors. And so with this, this is keeping with, or in fact, actually, it's, it's, it's lower than what we have in the contract for, for Redwood as far as the counselors. The, for, for Redwood, in, in terms of discretionary, if you're looking at on page 29, row 14, because of the need at the high school, again, the enroll, the, the dollar amount for discretionary is, it's higher compared to the middle school. And for Redwood, the number, the enrollment here is really, it looks, you know, it's 129 students. But really throughout the year, they do have students come in and, and in and out. And that's why the additional $8,000 is really, we, we give them additional dollars to, to help pay for the, for additional supplies that they need for students that we're just not able to capture because what the enrollment report shows is really as of the seabeds, which is the, the, the day, the data that we get, or we, we, we report enrollment as of October or in October of each year. So, so for, for them, they're getting an additional $8,000 in their lot, in their discretionary funds to help pay for the kids that are really in and out, that we're not able to capture out of those enrollment numbers from the seabeds. And then, at the high school, again, we've identified all of the positions out of the supplemental funds. And then we also have the athletics that you saw there, which is on row one. It's $157,000 is what they received in the current year. And we're keeping them at the same level as this year. One thing I do want to note on, for, for the high school, row 38, which is on page 32 of 74, you are, or actually, this one is a shift, it's not, so a portion of the salary of our, one of the VP is charged to the the donations out of the athletics. But because of, we know, we've been closed, you know, for a year. And so they're just, they did not collect, you know, the donations that in the current year to have to pay for that, that salary next year. So what we, what we are doing is actually, we are allowing the point two FTE of that administrator to be charged to unrestricted general fund for one year only. And we've noted that in row 38. So they can, so they give them a year to, to hopefully, you know, we're, we're back to person next year. And that's the plan. And so we can, we, we, they can start the, the collecting their donations again for their athletics program. And so then they will have enough money to cover for the following year. But this year, I do wanted to highlight that it's a point two FTE that's being charged out of the unrestricted general fund, but it's only good for one year. And I think that's all I have under the high school. Moving on to the departments, unless you have specific questions, okay? Departments, the first one here is the superintendent. It's a, it's just a few rows here for the, for the superintendent. Really, it's just the supplies and materials that's needed. We've identified here for if any type of increase, which is for conference expense or professional development. So overall, the, there's not an increase here, it's actually a reduction. And that's because one of the things that you're not, that you are, that's not included here is the, the, the money that we owe, the budget for the, the, what do you call this? For, oh, yeah, election, thank you. For the election, that's not included here for next year.
I was gonna say, I hope that the board on page 33 of 74, where it says governing board increase for workshops is because next year, I actually think it's going to be virtual again, but the CSBA conference may be in San Francisco. And we do have two new board members or as a whole board, if you wanted to attend. I just put that in there since we also have our board members attending the masters in governance. But if you don't use it, then it just stays.
And then we'll move on to the CBO, which is in my budget, which on, what I'll highlight is on page 35 of 74. This is a one FTE. And we have a, we, the position is a theater operations and facility permits, permit, position. This is, if you recall, we have, our CFA executive director left and took on a, a full-time teaching position. So that person was paid out of the rental from the Center for the Arts rental fees. And so the source of funding for this one is actually the, the CFA because we, what we're doing is we're combining, we're, we are, we are creating a position where the person will oversee the CFA, which is the same thing, that the same type of work that the executive director did. In addition to that, we also have other, our other properties that we're starting to rent out. So we have the Adobe, if you recall, we have the Adobe Art Gallery. We have also fields that are, are property from the mass, you know, what we, you know, what we, we found that a couple of years ago. It turns out to be, we have more properties than we thought. So the, so this, this position will oversee this, again, the CFA and also the rental of the properties, including the pool, the swim center. I know that we've, where we, we have a, a local group that started to use the pool. And, and that is also, you know, it's, it's a revenue stream for, for the district. And so money will not come out of the general fund. It will come out, or the position will be paid by the rentals of the CFA and also the, the facilities rental.
So this is, so this is a new position we had talked about a little bit before. So that, you know, any direction you have for us?
Yeah, I actually have a thought about that. First of all, I think it's a good position. I like the idea. We've talked about it for some time and I think it's good that we're going to do it. You know, but I, as I think Suzie implied there, certainly, this is meant to be a self-sustaining position. And along with a number of the other expenses around that. So I think, although it's not urgent certainly, but I would hope in the next few months, maybe we could see a business plan around all of that operation. Because this is actually a really good thing if we do this right. But we want to make sure it's going to be successful. So I'm glad to see it's, we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, so I know that Dr. Beats maybe can say a little bit more about this, but we have to, because it's a new position. Dr. Beats, if you want to say where we are with that process, so that once that's approved, then we can actually go ahead and find the right person and then work on all of what you just talked about, a business plan, what do we do with, you know, the things we need to do.
Okay, so this would be considered a classified supervisory position. So the first step, we've already been in communication with CSEA, even though it is not a CSEA position, to verify that with them and mutually agree on that. It will go to the Personnel Commission next week. If the Personnel Commission approves the job description, it will then go to the board for approval. Our goal is to take it to the, bring it to you next meeting, April 28th. If, once that is done, then we propose the position and go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I'm going to skip through, unless you have specific questions on some of the departments. I will skip to page 50. This is the educational services. We do have a few highlighted sections there in red to show you the, any new position or increase. On page 50, row 72, you're seeing a, actually, really, this is a shift. Really not a new position, but it's a shift because we are, our low-performing block grant is fully expanded in the current year. So that means, and we knew this, right? So we, we wanted to maximize the most restricted grants that had a specific timeline. We moved that position so we can relieve our supplemental funds. Now that that's going away, we just, we are just going, putting that position back into the supplemental funds. We are, there's a reduction here, a, for a parent outreach. This is for the community liaison that is closing a point five position. So this is actually a reduction. So that's a change there for 1.5 to 1 FTE. And then a campus monitor there that we're closing as well on row 77. I am going to skip all the way to, for Eds, again, for Ed services, we are, we've identified some positions that will be funded out of the expanded learning. So on page 57 of 74, there is a require, or we are using $142,000 out of that grant to pay for instructional software as well as bringing or adding TOSA, teacher on special assignment, on page 58, row 261. And also the, a social worker, a 1.8 new position, a social worker that was previously funded with the, from the, by the, sorry, previously funded by the, that one-time money that we receive, which is low-performing block grant that's fully expanded. And now we're, we're, we're shifting that or moving that position, those positions into the expanded learning.
So let me ask, if these are one, one-year positions or something, is that correct?
Correct, yes. On page 61, this is.
Suzie, can I just add something? You know, a part of the conversation the last two days was that this is one-time fund for these kinds of things. And there may be additional opportunity for us to expand, extend them and not have to spend them by a certain time. And also depending on what happens with federal stimulus funds. But again, my push would be put it all together and make it ongoing instead of one time. So.
On page 61 of 74, this is educational services and their student services. So we are under the expanded learning, it's a, a new position for the wellness center. That's a 1.1 FTE and then a social, secondary social worker. And then for our special ed, that starts on page 62, on page 62, you're seeing all the same positions that we've just highlighted are, are in yellow. Those are all existing positions that we, that we show there. And then for any new, in any new positions, we are moving those into the expanded learning. So one of the things that I wanted to just highlight under special ed would be for those positions will be the, a social worker and also a program specialist. That's on page 69 of 74. That again, can be, we can use an expanded learning for those two positions.
So this is, when trustee theater, you were talking about social emotional support. This is as we were looking at our programs and expanded learning and the need for next year. This is why you see several social workers and MTSS coordinators and things like that.
And then finally, on page 73 of 74, this is human resources or HR. This is a, we're increasing the, the, the teacher on special assignment. We have, currently, we have two FTE and we are increasing to three. This is the induction coaches to, due to anticipated increase in the new teachers for next year. So with that, we, you know, if we go back to the page where we have a summary, as you can see, our revenue, so we're not. So we're not overspending in this case where our revenue of one hundred eleven million dollars compared to expenditures of a hundred eight million dollars that's included here. There's a difference and that difference is what Mr. Mahdi mentioned earlier. For the expanded learning, that's not all, you know, we're not what we have. We haven't identified all of the expense or the expenditures for the expanded learning. It's going to be, we are going to take that to you for approval on on May twenty sixth. And we'll have the different positions and and the services that we're going to 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 have for next year to to support our students.
And and from now until then, there are lots of meetings that Dr. Raymond is holding. She he's already had several where he's getting feedback from everybody. And then so some of you are in those meetings here and there. And LCAP Equity Committee, Parent Leadership PAC. So I'm working with our teachers' union in classified. A part of the a percentage of the extended learning grant by requirement is required to be spent on classified paraeducators. That was one of the agreements in SB eighty six.
So, okay, thanks for the presentation here. Are there any questions or comments for Suzie or Parveen on this presentation? Yeah, Michael.
One question and just a note of gratitude. So let me just thank Suzie and Parveen. This is tough when you're new to this, to make sense of this. And it gives me faith to think that we really are accounting for all of our revenue and I I'm really impressed by the work here. And for the community to be able to see like, what does it take to produce a school? We have the data right there. So thank you for that. I'm curious, and since I'm new to this, if this question doesn't make sense, you can just totally dismiss it. What would our budgeting process look like if we didn't do this exercise? If we didn't do a zero based budgeting approach, like what's the delta and like the process and like how priorities are?
Arvind?
Yeah, I think priorities are based on the same priorities, but most of the time people don't go through this at a board meeting and show all the details. It would be a lot more general and kind of doing the same thing every year, saying, hey, this how much you got, this how much you're going to get. We actually ask people to look at what they have asked for, what they've used the money. Is it effective? Is it not effective? So I'm not saying that other people don't do that. It's just that we're very methodical about the, you know, just kind of looking at each expenditure and saying, is it effective or not? If not, let's do something different. That's why you see sometimes we say, well, we're doing this instead, we're doing that. And you know, I sit here, think about what your focus has been around supporting student social emotional learning. I did hear from one person in another school district, not close to us, that they're about as big as we are and they have one social worker. I just don't know how you could do that. How we could do that? We we just have such need that that we really have to focus on it. So it's just a lot more detail and a lot more work on the part of the schools. I mean, the first year we did this, I know, you know, trustee Adams can tell you how much work it was for teachers too, that were like, what? We have to, we have to do this, but now it's gotten easier. So and and I I want to say thank you, Suzie. She's incredible in this work and has made it easier every year. Just, you know, the first two pages to me, we didn't have the first two years. I love these pages because I can look at this and go, okay, so it costs this much to run the high school or this elementary school with everything in.
Lavender and Dolly.
I also want to echo what Dot said earlier about mental health supports and social emotional supports. And I'm going to paraphrase, I'm not going to get it right. But Dr. Raymond always says, you put your money to what you feel is matters. And you can say it better than I can, Dr. Raymond. And, you know, this speaks to that. We see the learning loss, we see the social emotional impacts. And that's what we're doing, and I'm really looking forward to the presentation on the twenty six.
Yes, I just had two nuts and bolts questions. What is an ELO grant? What does ELO mean? I'm sure it's not an old rock band.
Yeah, it's the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant. So we just, yeah, so yes, so that's the that's what it stands for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the expanded learning. And then the second was, what is Schmup University?
Oh, that's our library. Dr. Amy maybe can speak to it. That's that's the online service that we have.
Okay.
That's right, and it's only it's only for the high school level for Schmup.
Oh, okay, all right. I had heard about it before and still didn't know what it was. Thank you very much. I do like all of the additions of the social workers and the counselors and all of those things for mental health. I think that is really great. And the program specialist. That's it.
Mike?
I appreciate the Electric Light Orchestra reference. I was wondering, you know, being a parent from a parent's side, when you're in like a a parent club meeting and you're being asked to maybe support half an FTE here to support something. How does that play into this entire budget process when we think about priorities? And when you go and ask parent clubs and PTAs for that funds? And how does it does it appear as revenue in some way in our our budgets? I'd be curious to know the mechanics of that.
Yes, so that's a good question. So we do record those. So so it they appear in the restricted resources. So we have any donations that we get to pay for their salaries, additional, you know, extra hours or, you know, or substitute in this case or or supplies, right? So they do appear in the restricted side of the general fund. And they have a specific resource so we can keep track of them. What we do is we do get what we ask is to from in the from the business services is a copy of what they they submitted that specifically tells us. So for us, so we know exactly and we can follow if it's for a specific purpose. Like if it's if it only pays for if they're only if they say give gave us a thousand dollars and it only pays for Chromebooks, right? So we we make sure that it only that money is only set aside for Chromebooks and it can't be moved anywhere else. Yeah.
Dot?
So we've been doing this zero based budgeting process for so long. I don't even remember what the old way was. But I know that, you know, everybody always talks about transparency in managing public funds and being good stewards of public funds. And I think this is the best way to do it. I'm glad we started doing it. We do it this way every year for the last however many years, and it's open to the public. And everyone can see what each school is spending their money on. So if there if there's any question about being transparent about it, I mean, there should be no question in our school district because this is how we do it. So thank you for all of that effort. And I really do appreciate that we do this every year and all of the teachers and the principals have to go through this process. And it's it's worthy.
Lavender?
Just one last reminder, we started that, did we start that when Suzie came on board?
I think Suzie was the director, I think.
Yeah, I was the director when we started, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I feel like this is the process that Chase Candy away. Because it was so much, we were a lot.
Well, I'll say that I think this is, I do appreciate all of Suzie's work because I think this is probably the hardest year ever this year and next year to figure out actually where we are in here because there are so many expenses and revenues that are unique to these couple of years. And so it's great to go through this and 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 try to get a grip on where we are because it's a moving target. And I do like the ZBB process a lot. I think it really helps us. Because we, you know, we want to do what we can to support mental health and support learning and lots of other things. We also want to make sure that's sustainable into the future. And so we have our fiduciary responsibility there with it. And, you know, we mentioned a lot of new FTEs here, and I assume we'll be getting that normal report that we get that adds or makes changes to our Manning roster. And that'll be interesting to help us keep track of all of these and everything. So it is an unusual year, and I'm glad that we have the money, at least right now, for this year and next year to take care of these exceptional expenses. If we didn't have this, we would be in some really serious trouble. So thank goodness for the federal money and the state money that's coming into here and the fact that the governor is giving us some of that money. Are there any other final questions for Suzie or Parveen about the ZBB process? I don't see any, so thank you very much for that report. And we will move on now to item E, which is a resolution concerning trustee Theodore being absent at the last meeting. This is an action item.
I'll move to approve the doctor's resolution seventy eight, twenty twenty one, excuse the absence of trustee Theodore on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you.
And I second that.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is I think this is sort of a personnel thing, is that correct? Arvind?
Um, no.
No, okay, then Shane, do you have a preferential vote for this?
Yes.
Thank you. Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so that means we've adopted the resolution five to zero. Move on to item F, which is the minutes of our last board meeting.
All over approval of the adopted events of the last board meeting held on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Move the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Shane, do you have a preferential vote?
Yes.
Lavender?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And although yes, it's five to nothing. The minutes are adopted. And finally, we move on to item G, which is our meetings for next year.
Yeah, so these are just let me make sure I am not muted. Yes, and these are just our regular board meetings. And we also, I I believe we did did set aside a couple of special board meetings that we've always had. But, you know, like we normally don't have any meetings in July. Last year, we had two or three special board meetings. So if there's always, you know, if there's a need, we do. But this is the normal board meeting calendar every second and fourth Wednesday of the year, and some months we only have one.
You know, I do have a concern about the schedule, though, that you mentioned about July, there's no meeting. In fact, there's no meeting before school starts on August tenth.
Yeah.
It's pretty deep in his.
So in our board policy, normally we don't have one in July. But when we get closer to that point, you can just decide which day or week it may not be on a Wednesday. We probably have to see. My hope is that we have the direction, we have all of our decisions made because we've got to be planning in July, we should be done, ready for kids in August. So but if there's a need, then you can decide which day or time you want.
Okay, that's acceptable to me certainly. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, are there any other concerns about the calendar? Yes, Dolly? You're muted.
Not concerns about the calendar, but are we going to discuss the time when meetings begin?
Um, yeah, that's that's actually a good point. We've been starting at four. So just let us know, we usually start, you know, meetings at five at we start like.
Well, traditionally, we've started them at six.
Six and then start.
Open session at seven. Right, it was our tradition for many years, and it's only during this virtual board meeting time that we've changed these schedules. Lavender?
I was just going to say something similar about, you know, if things open up again, I know that a few of us will be heading back to the office. And and so that time may be a little bit different as far as our availability.
That's a good point.
So would you like to to go back to what we had?
I mean, now it's too late, but somewhere in between what we're doing now and then.
Well, who has truck? Is that okay?
Five o'clock?
Five?
Is five okay?
Can I have a show of whatever appendage you want to show? Okay, I see everybody seems to like five o'clock. And that's reasonable. I think that also would give our
Yeah.
Our families the opportunity to tune in.
Yeah.
So and next time we may very well be in the boardroom, we hope.
That's our hope. It's coming.
Is that, are you swearing something, Mike, or is that?
No, Amy's hands up, I'm just acknowledging Amy.
Oh, Amy's hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that was a five o'clock closed session time. And then six o'clock would be open session. Okay, I will, we will need to bring the board bylaw to update that at a future board meeting, just so you're aware.
Thank you, Amy. I think, Dolly, did you have your hand up?
I did have my hand up, but it was the same thing that Amy just said.
Okay.
I just want to appreciate Amy for keeping us on track like that.
Yes.
You can't just willingly change things, there's a process. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, so this is an action item.
I would make a motion that we approve the schedule as amended. No, no, we're not doing that later, do the time later, we did it amended, so. The item as it is.
I'll second it.
Very good. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Lavender? Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so we've approved the calendar. Thank you very much. There's no request for any more public comments, so we're down to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share a couple of things. We've missed Shane in DSLA because I know he's been really busy with school being so different. But I just wanted to let you know that the District Student Leadership Alliance has been meeting on on and off, and we actually have some committees they've they've selected to be on. A few of them are a part of the grading policy committee. Few of them are, a couple of them are a part of the Wellness Committee. And then a group of them are actually working with Rotary. And I know Mr. Howard has been working as a Rotary president with some Rotary Rotary members and myself. They're working on a history, Cast Valley History Project. The kids are really excited. I think it's a great opportunity for them. So I wanted to share that. The other thing I wanted to share is yesterday, last night, Rotary has actually started an anti racist group. And it's been amazing to attend those. It's at night, it's voluntary. There's quite a few of us attending, we're reading books, we're talking, we're discussing, we're taking action. And one of the things the group wanted to do is have, because Rotary actually donated through Mr. Howard, three hundred dollars to BSU at the middle school and also to the women of women of no, Women of Color for Change. So Ayana and them, it's amazing. So they had asked for us to just invite student clubs that are working on anti racist. Student clubs that are working on anti-racist work and things like that to come. The two of the, um, students who came and presented made me so incredibly proud. And people at that meeting are mostly, um, you know, some much older than, uh. Than some of us and some our age, some younger. They were just in awe of these two students. Um, and one person said it well, our future is in great hands with these kids. I just find them so profound, so. Wonderful. They talked about all of the things they're doing to move us forward. Um, and right at that meeting, it, they were so excited to meet them. They offered them internships. They just loved it. So I just wanted to thank them and I want to thank the teachers who are. Their club advisors. I know Ms. Van Court was, uh, Anne Van Court was there as well. So they just, they were just great. I wanted to. Share that with you. Um, and now there's some work they're going to do in the community. That they actually make connections with some folks in Rotary who are going to help them. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, um, we're still working on this kind of behind the scene. I am, and, um. Uh, trustee Theodore, I need to, uh, meet with you with just a little bit to kind of organize the, uh, the event. Uh, but we are going to, um, hopefully, um, try to show Chinatown rising. Um, as a part of our efforts to support our, um, Asian Pacific Islander. Community member. I think it's a great opportunity. So we'll work on that and put the information out. I hope that you take advantage of angst. It's a great opportunity, um, that we have coming our way and, um. It'll be a great, um, great thing for our families. So I think that's it. And I wanted to ask Shane, um, when you were going to be able to bring, um. The student who was selected for next year?
Yeah, I could bring her whenever if next meeting works or the meeting after, whenever we could fit that little time slot in for like an intro and just.
That would be great.
Get the feeling of how the meetings work. So whatever, any date should work.
Yeah, probably in May. So let, um, you and I will talk.
Okay.
And then we'll figure, figure it out.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
So, uh, Shane, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, not much. All I've been doing is just continuing to serve on the Trojan Time Advisory Board and working with CSBMA to have a vote on the California Board of Education.
Great, thank you. Lavender?
Um, so for my report out, um, have, uh, ad hoc meeting with the hard, uh, team. With Gary and Parveen next Tuesday. Um, and I do, uh, this month is Earth Month, uh, Dot, thank you for posting that. Um, I, I, I'm kind of sad that we're not going to be able to do the activities that we usually do at the schools and, you know, with. The, um, the sanitary district. So I'm sad that we're not going to be able to do it. Um, but I, I hope that there are some things going on, uh, at least talking about it throughout our schools, um, about. Birthday. And then, um, not school board related, um, but, um. We were fortunate enough to be able to, um. A while back started scholarship for Nick and we had our interviews and, um, you know, it was really about leadership students to exhibit. Uh, leadership qualities, um, that will. Make a change in the world and have made a change in the world. And I'm just happy to announce that Shane is actually the selected. Uh, recipient of the scholarship, the five thousand dollar scholarship. So congratulations again, Shane.
Thank you. And of course I thank you again.
Yeah, and I'm just really, um, you know, as a panel of Nick's closest friends and family, uh, many of which, um, live and work in this community. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Yeah, congratulations Shane. That's really, uh, quite an honor to get that, uh, scholarship. Uh, Michael?
Hi there. I have a few updates. Uh, I just saw this today and I think this is important for the community to check out, uh, the, uh. Alameda County Library will be hosting a panel on April twenty-first from four to five. Um, it's a COVID nineteen vaccine information. Um, it's going to be a panel of medical professionals to address the many questions. And misinformation surrounding the COVID nineteen virus vaccine access to the vaccine and the effects on families and children. Uh, there will be, um, folks from the Bay Area Community Health Organization. And, uh, Alameda County Public Health. So it, great way to, to, to sharpen the saw. More about where we're at with the, with COVID. Um, in support of the Castro Valley Educational Foundation, uh, two things. Um, I helped out with, um, uh, a lot of applications for, uh, many of the scholarship programs. That the Educational Foundation is, is probably going to be announcing pretty soon. And that was a really fantastic way to learn more about. Uh, the students in our district who, um, are, are, are graduating this year. Um, really. Uh, the diversity and just the, the, the interest of our students is, is, is really tells a great story about Castro Valley. Um, also Bike for Education that was mentioned earlier, that's from April sixteenth to the thirtieth. Um, I apparently will be riding my bike around town, uh, to various coffee shops. Um, and I will be dr- riding my bike to do yoga. So, and somehow you'll be able to support me in those efforts to support, um, the Educational Foundation. I was really happy to, um, kind of head back to Chabot to spy on, um, how things were going with reopening. I dressed up as Shabop. The, um, the Chabot mascot and I was able to observe, um, a lot of happy kids coming back to school. And a really great effort as they were leaving school that day. Um, saw a lot of hardworking teachers and staff. Um, really doing a great job and it was remarkable to see how quick. Our students, uh, were adapting and understanding what they needed to do to, to. Get through the, get into school and get to their classroom in an orderly way and in a safe way. So I was really impressed by the, the, the. Um, how they orchestrated that as, a- 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 at Chabot. Um, participated in the ta- Equity Task Force. Uh, I appreciated how that, that engagement's being used to help shape the, the LCAP and how. Some of our priorities that we talked about tonight. Um, and I want to thank Dr. Ryman for his continued efforts there. Um, and everyone's participation there. Um, and lastly, had the opportunity to visit Proctor Elementary yesterday. Uh, that was so much fun. Uh, it was really, um, frankly emotional to like hear kids and to see kids in classrooms. Um, to see kids walking around school and, um, being back in school. And it was, I want to thank everyone at, at Proctor for welcoming me. Um, and letting me, uh, learn more. And I look forward to visiting some more schools through the end of the school year. That's my update.
Uh, Dolly?
Uh, I just have a few things. This week for me, of course, was my first day back into in-person teaching on Monday. Uh, so there was a, a lot of preparation for that. Everything went really well. I had concerns about. The new tech, but it went smoothly and I was so happy. Um, we all went to, of course, a special board meeting, uh, I believe, uh, Friday, three twenty-six. Um, and then, uh, the board meeting or the meeting, uh, I attended. Was the Eden Area ROP Board. It was very enlightening. I learned a lot of things about, uh, ROP. Although I've had students go to ROP, uh, finish programs, get their certificates. It was, um, great to talk to Linda Granger, the superintendent there, and the other three board members from, um. The other school districts and just to learn a lot more about ROP and their programs there. Um, you know, they have like a first responder program with the Hayward Fire Department. They have auto tech and they have law careers and auto collision and cybersecurity, which is partnered with Cisco. Uh, dental assisting, they take the state test. Just all of these really great programs that, um. Students who would like to have better career and technical education, um, should, um, access. And there are some, uh, they're, um, trying to also, um. Align some of the requirements for high school with the classes that are taught at ROP so that. Uh, it is easier to go to ROP and get your high school graduation requirements done. At the same time. And I think that would be really helpful to, uh, our kids, uh, so that. Um, they would be able to go to ROP. Uh, wonderful, wonderful thing. The only other thing I think I had, whoops, oh dear, yes, um. Right, special board meeting. Oh, and then this coming Wednesday, I'm really looking forward to the special ed, uh, parent advisory committee. It's my turn to go to that. So. Uh, since I'm, you know, all, you know, teach special ed, that should be very interesting. Thank you.
Dot?
Um, since the last board meeting, the only thing I've attended was the Equity Task Force on Monday. Um, and that was, as usual, a great meeting, um, to hear about the. Move, the continued movement towards equity in our district. Um. I'm always impressed with how deeply the, the, um, social justice torches is run in this district and it's. Um. You know, something my, my heart is all in for. Um, and then next week I have the Parent Leadership Council meeting and. I will also be leading a bike ride for the, um, CVEF Bike for Education, starting from Eden Bicycle's Bike Shop on the twenty-fifth. So Sunday. Bring your helmet.
Parveen?
I was going to say, I'm not sure if I can join that one because that's. Like a real bike. Maybe I'll go with you. But it's, I'm, I'm glad that was brought up because we need to get the message out because the funding for that. Bike ride actually benefits our wellness programs.
Okay, well, I just have three short things and they are related to Rotary and a couple of them have been touched on already. Parveen mentioned the Rotary's racial justice meetings. They're in their eleventh month now and they meet every three or four weeks, uh, for an hour or so. So that's been a really outstanding program and we were really happy that yesterday. The students could join that group and I see lots of great synergy between those two groups. Um, also Parveen mentioned the Castro Valley History Project that's attracted a bunch of students and. Really happy to help, have them helping us with that. Uh, that's a thing we did a few years ago with the Ed Foundation and it worked very well. And I'll mention one other thing that Rotary is doing in conjunction with the Ed Foundation and that is. On May fourth, uh, we have a joint presentation by Eric Allatory. Who spent twenty-eight years singing with Chanticleer, the, uh. Extraordinary a cappella group in San Francisco. So I think it'll be really fabulous to. Uh, hear Eric talk about his, uh, career and he'll be in conversation with Larissa Sadoway. Uh, who's our choir director. So it'd be a singer-to-singer conversation there. I think it's going to be really fantastic. So that's all I have. So I'll say thanks to everybody for all their hard work and presentations. To Parveen and Nick presenting about what our school plans are and in particular, and to. Suzie for her work on, uh, what the budget's going to look like. And. Also, I thank our twenty-four attendees who are still with us. Thank you very much for sticking it out with us. And I look forward to seeing all of you again in a couple of weeks. So have a great rest of the week. And I'll say good night and adjourn the meeting.